So what's seen on the screen is what is seen on the YouTube.
So if you guys don't turn around, you're good.
So again, once we get started here, because it is in our council meeting, all questions will be directed to the chair, which is me. And so, once we get going, we'll just try and adhere to that rule, please. But it is seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agenda to present. Any questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Oh, and for those that, we recorded electronically, so. And so we wrote on our computer, so you won't see it show hand, it's carrying now. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 23rd. Any questions, errors, remissions? Hearing none, George Lee moves the minutes. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And that's carrying now. Okay, moving on to delegation. So we have here Gillan from Tango and Sean from HDR. And they're going to do their presentation. At the end of their presentations, I'll ask for questions. So I'll just show hands and I will ask you to ask your question, please.
Okay. I'll start. If everyone's happy, I'll stand up. And so you can all see me. So this, this basically is a snapshot of where the project is. So I think we'll talk through that, but I should have said thank you very much for the invite. And Sean and I are pleased to be here. It's been a great project and things are moving well. We're coming up to a point where we need some direction from the town, so thanks for having us. So in terms of the first section here is really just some of the high level bullet points of what we've achieved to date. Some of you have been at a few of the meetings and may be familiar with some of the stuff. But the first thing that we did at the beginning of the year was we put out an RFP for Design Services and Engineering. Sean from HDR, in conjunction with VDA, highly experienced sport recreation architects and engineering teams, were awarded the contract in early February. So the next step is then to move into a top graphical survey, which many of you probably are familiar with what that is. But it really gives an overview of what the current site condition looks like, what services are on site, what the elevations are, where the trees are, and existing structures. And that's really what the design team need in order to then develop the design from there. The geotechnical investigation was also completed on site, which again is to provide information to the consultant team of the existing ground conditions to be able to then right-size the foundations, water management, all that sort of stuff. Next was the hazmat assessment, which is an investigation to see if there's any hazardous materials within the facility. That's to ensure that during demolition, appropriate steps are taken in order to mitigate any health risks to workers or members of the public during demolition to remediate any hazardous materials. On the site, there is a couple. There's lead paint, which is very standard in buildings of this age. And secondly, there's traces of asbestos within the insulation and the roof fan in the walls, which again is relatively standard for buildings of this age. The key part that we've worked on since February has been the typical design phases that all projects go through. They start with conceptional design, which is really taking all the desires and the wants of the town and what they really envisage being within the facility and then coming up with a concept. That then moves into design development, which progresses the design closer to something that could be built from. And finally, into the working drawings stage, which we're now at and pretty much complete. That's the stage before going to tender. During each of those design stages, there's third-party cost estimates undertaken in order to control the design and ensure that costs aren't going up. So since we've started, there's been about, it varies from scope reductions but significant value engineering, which has resulted in about $3 million in reduced costs to get us to where we are currently, which is about 5.2. The next couple of items, building permit and developing permit, they've been submitted. There's one final little step of consolidating the two lots. The project spanned two lots, which is kind of the plan title. So we're now really at the final stage of pre-construction, which is tendering and awarding a contract. The intent would be to commence building next year in order to have this facility completed by the end of, really by this time next year before the weather changes. And then the intent would be to open the following year. So that gives you an idea of what we've been working on and where we are. Sean's going to give you an overview of some of the elevations, the floor plans. And then we can talk about, I can give you an overview of the current estimate of the anticipation. It's a theoretical anticipation of what the costs would be based on the current design. And then at that stage, we can, we can take any questions and answers and go from there. So over to you, Sean.
Thanks, Gillan. So thanks for having us and thanks everyone else for coming. So as Gillan mentioned, we started this project about 10 or 11 months ago. We had a shred with various stakeholders, a lot of people that are in this room right now were there. There are obviously some new faces as well. But we, what we decided to do is gather everyone together and see what was important. What were the overriding needs, what were the wants, what were the absolute have to haves? And what are some of the things that you guys have got without us walking through some of where we are today? And I'm going to go a little bit fast, I think at times I might end up skipping over some things. But please, just we can have, there's going to be time for questions towards the end. So you're all familiar with the site as it is now. The new pool is more or less right on top of where the existing pool was. We have, I'll just back up for a little bit. Off the center street, that's where the existing parking is, that all stays the same. All of the pathways up, the gazebo, the, there's the barbecue pit, or sorry, barbecue, the point-of-operate barbecue. And a lot of the other things around the outside are all staying exactly the same. We focused our development on the pool itself and the new building. So what we have right now is we have a six-lane lap pool. 25 meters long, obviously. We have zero beach entry with a bunch of spray features. Everything from, there are no squirt guns, but a lot of fountains that come up out of the ground. Different things that the kids can interact with or adults have these issues. Zero beach entry down into leisure park or leisure water tots area. And it's benches with some soft features in it as well. We've got a new building, which we'll get to some plans in just a moment. New building, although it's rotated a little bit, it's more or less the exact same size as the existing building, slightly larger. Obviously, the spray park, everything remains the outside. I think I've covered all of that. Two things to note, right now, we're currently showing future hot tub, future water slides. We'll get into some, excuse me, some of the budgeting issues in a moment. Right now, the show is future. When we go to tender, what we're going to do is we're going to ask the contractors to provide a price for what it would cost to install it. We may be able to include now, we may not. Gillan and I will, we'll discuss this a little bit as we move forward. So four lines for the building, as I mentioned, center street is this way. Primary access to the building will be through the front here with admissions counter, lifeguard, lifeguard area. All these doors open out onto the pool deck. Washrooms, obviously washroom required by code for people that enter the building and use the site. A series of changed cubicles, showers and more washrooms. A corridor that obviously allows you to access them, and this is the camp room at the end here. And again, all these doors open out onto the pool deck. Windows out into the spray park or into the existing park and a entrance there. Two further. Elevations of the buildings proposed look like. Nothing overly worth mentioning, other than the fact that we decided to use a lot of materials that are, we'll say will stand up to abuse of children, from children and other people who want to abuse the building. You can just scroll through the next half of the pictures just to get an idea of what it's supposed to look like. That's all I've got.
Great. Okay. All right. Thanks, Sean. So yeah, so now that you've all had the chance to see the floor plans, some of the elevations, and I'm sure a few questions will evolve, but the way, so I talked about those estimates which are done at each design milestone in order to control the cost and not let it escalate. So this is a third-party cost estimate here of the anticipated costs. I don't know if you can all see it because it's relatively small writing, but the first line is construction. So that's what we're referred to as the hard costs. So really, the boots on the ground, the materials, the equipment and the labor to build. That's sitting at just under $4 million. The estimator carries an alliance in there. And again, because this is theoretical, it's not based on hard tenders. They carry a 3.5% alliance in there, which gives a little bit of a buffer should any of those unit rates that they've used whilst taking off measurements from the drawing and their calculations, that provides a buffer. So that's what that line is there. Another line worth noting is that there's a 2% escalation in there. This is construction that we're looking at next year. Typically, in Alberta, the last few years, estimator's been using 2% as a general rule of thumb. And in B.C., it's different, it's higher, higher than that due to the market demands. But in Alberta, typically, it's been 2% for the last couple of years. So that's if we were to build today, if we were to wait another year, it would be roughly 2%. The intent on this project is to try and tender it and award it this year to try and take advantage of that rather than waiting and having costs potentially escalate. The development costs, so unlike the hard costs there, they're known as the soft costs. That includes project management, architecture, structural engineering, mechanical, electrical engineering. And then there's a couple of items we talked about, topless survey, geotech, all that sort of stuff that's required to get to the construction point and through it. We've carried a 10% project contingency in there, which we highly recommend on all projects. That's there really to try and mitigate the risks associated with construction projects, which could be unforeseen, it could be scope changes, it could be changes that the owner wants during construction when they see something that they maybe would like to change. Unforeseen things typically revolve around ground conditions. That's typically one of the biggest risks on projects, particularly where we're going into the ground at least four meters in order to get the tank to the right depth to enable diving. So that's just a standard rule of thumb. So that culminates in an approximate price of about 5.2 million and change for hard, soft and contingencies. Sean had mentioned that the plans currently show the water slides and hot tub. So associated with those is obviously some mechanical, electrical, as well as concrete deck and things like that that would be required. So if they aren't required, those items wouldn't also be needed. But if the intent is to complete the design to accommodate those and if contractors will have the chance to price those separately, so if they are something that the town would like to proceed with, then they can. You don't need to ask for a change order during construction, which is then marked up with overhead and profit. That also, it's better to get those prices during tender because it's a competitive tender environment. Whereas when you've awarded a contract, you're in a negotiating position. It's a lot weaker because you're committed to one contractor from the project. So that's an overview of design and current cost status. So I've outlined a couple of next steps and really what Sean and I and the rest of the project team require. And that's a decision from the town and direction to proceed to tender in order to put this out to the market, to find out what the costs are for the town to make a decision who they'd like to proceed with. I just put a note there that there's potential redesign, scope reductions. And that really comes down to affordability. So if there is some, if pricing is high, then there's always a risk that some tweaking of the design and working with a preferred builder to make it work or fit within the affordability level. And then after that, really, it's down to construction, commissioning. And that's really when the hard work on the side starts. But as you're all aware and can see from this, there's quite a few steps which have to go, we have to go through in order to get to that point. So that's, that's really it in a nutshell of where we currently are today. So thanks very much for letting Sean and I bring you up to speed. And we would welcome any questions via the mayor.
Go, go for it. Okay, Richard.
So you're saying 5.2, that doesn't include slides or hot tub?
That's right.
Any estimate as to?
What about cost?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. And I should have pointed that out. So future hot tub with mechanical, electrical systems and lines, 130,000. Future water slides, two water slides and a tower. Mechanic, electrical pump house, 860.
Eight?
60.
$860,000?
Crap.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
Hey, basically another million.
Yes.
Any other questions? Ron?
When you're talking about the construction and the cost and you said that you didn't base it on tenders, what did you base it on?
Unit rates. So a quantity surveyor, cost planner, they take the measure of the drawing and they then multiply that by market unit rates.
So how close is there going to be?
Hopefully 3.5%. Hopefully. So to give you some idea, the estimates follow the shadow of the design steps. So when you're, when you've got a concept, there's very little design information there. There's maybe outlines and things like that. Most, most quantity surveyors could be talking about 15% variance at that point. And then as it gets closer to drawings that could be built off, they allow for three and a half.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have two questions. One of them is 5.2 billion, right?
Correct.
Is this what the town has a budget for this project?
No, we budgeted 4.5, but I'll let Kim answer that question because it's kind of complicated.
Okay. Okay, if I may, I have another question.
Okay.
What if the tenders come way over this amount of this budget that the town would have? What would happen?
Well, I'll answer that one.
Okay.
So as a council, we have a couple of choices, is to put the project on hold. And that's where Gillan had talked about, you know, you calculate a 2% increase. Or we recalculate our goals and come up with. Gillan also said there is a method that we could reduce size of our scope of the project. And in that, most of us that have sat at the meetings and beat up the engineers and Gillan lots are pushing that we shouldn't reduce our size of our scope. And the reason why, and that's why we put the hot tub and the slides as an extra separate. And I'll just use it in an analogy, is if you decided to build a bathroom, but you could only afford to put in a four-foot bathtub, your goal was to put in a five-foot bathtub or, and two sinks. What would you be better to do? Put a five-foot tub in and only one sink and add the extra sink later? Or re-renovate your bathroom and put in the five-foot tub?
I would sell my house.
So the group kind of decided that we would still go with the six-lane pool. And the reason why is because if we don't go with a large enough pool, we can never host a summer games and we can never host a sanctioned competition. Maybe we never will, but we will eliminate that chance. So this group that kept on meeting, kept on saying, we would rather add the items that we could add later than cut our scope of the size of the pool basin, smaller than what we have at present. And some communities have chosen to go smaller and will never be able to host a couple of events in their community ever that are sanctioned. And it affects our summer games, or not our summer games, our Tin Man. If we didn't have the size of the pool, there's a chance that Tin Man would not exist. So that's, this group kind of dealt with that. I'll let Kim answer the first question though.
For the first question on the funding, something that needs to be addressed right away is the soft costs that are identified in that, in that 5.2 have already been spent. That was, yeah, we're already in the process of having project management and design done. So those, that $500,000 has already been allocated by this group to get to this stage. So there's more costs that will go along if the project were to end today. Of course, we would save a little bit in there, but those are, those are costs that are already allocated. So the next thing that you asked, Elsie, was if this project goes to tender and it comes back way higher, you know this process probably better than anybody else in this room. These seven people decide whether this goes forward or not based on that tender price. They either accept it or deny it. So when you put it out to tender, you don't have to accept and, it's only when they make motion to accept and for what amount of dollars are going to be invested in. That's why when we talk to the design team, that the easiest things to remove were the hot tub and water slides because they can be easily added to a project where you can't dig an extra two lanes of pool. Once that pool basement, basin is there. So if we send it out to tender, and that's why Gillan mentioned it there, if we send this out to tender and we've got good indication from one of the pool builders that we've been talking about N2 for quite some time, saying that they're very aggressively going to go after this project because they've been waiting on it for a couple of years. They're saying that we're going to see some significant savings over these cost estimates. Now, we can't take that as gospel because, you know, they're in a competitive market as well. But we couldn't send them to tender for a four-lane pool and then change scope to a six as easy as we could by adding a hot tub or a water slide as an option that could then be added to the project afterwards. So if it comes in too high, they just won't approve it.
My first, my second question was, my first question was the budget. So you said 4.5 million is the budget?
That was.
That was a construction.
Construction budget. Then the $500,000 on the soft costs of the, is on top of it. So 5 million is probably what we kind of guesstimated. But to cut, just a second question. But kind of answer Ron. Oh, good, good. Kind of, the two other things is Ron's question and yours to a degree too is that, I'll use the hospital as an example. They had an estimator that estimated it, that was unfortunately on something that, you know, Piro Tudo accepted as something we should be able to legalize. And they came in at 4.5 million and the hospital came in at 6.2 when it was tendered. So there was an example where it went up. But we believe that the design group that was involved, that we have beaten up the engineers and architects tight enough that their numbers should be fairly close for their estimators of what it could come in at. Okay, no, Richard.
Just one question, the water slides and the hot tub, the piping can be placed in-ground accessible?
Pumps will be sized appropriately. Pumps will be around, taken to a manhole or a guy.
So you just said something, pumps will be sized appropriately, but you said we'd have to add pumps.
No, we have to add, sorry, we have to add a pump house.
A pump house, but we're going to have one anyways, right?
No.
No?
No, for the water slides?
Certainly, I can explain all of it.
Okay, that's what I meant.
So sorry, there would be a series of pumps in the building? The water slides are fed with the water from the pool, so we need a separate pump house to take water out of the pool via the slides. Save the water goes back into the pool.
So you can't put that in the same pump house?
No, it's a difference in the building.
So right, so right here on the drawing, the mechanical room for the building will be here. And the water slide pumps will be here. And so the water will come off the pool and we have detailed drawings that you guys can have a look at. You know, come on in tomorrow or whatever. But it pulls the water off the bottom of the, for the water slides, pulls the bottom off the water of the pool, bottom of the pool up to that, and it's just a shack with a pump in it. Runs it through the slides and then the water that ends up off the slides then goes back into the pool about halfway up into drains into the back. And the reason we worked on that is eliminates filtration, independent filtration, all of that so that you can use the filters that we have for the pool itself. So you don't have to have a separate filter. Anybody that's dealt with, anybody that's dealt with an independent hot tub filter knows that it would be way nicer if it went into a bigger.
And Gillan also made another comment too that needs to be highlighted is that, you know, under the contingencies, which, you know, if, again, because we've beaten up the architects and engineers so tightly, there should be very little contingency, other than Gillan never mentioned that code changes as an example. One that we didn't realize was a code change that, you know, until just a couple of last month, is that you have to have a cover for the pool. So you either have to have a mechanical cover or you have to have a chemical cover. And a mechanical cover is astronomical in costs and labor intensified. So we went with a chemical cover. And so that would be a code change if something happens from the time it goes out for tender and the commissioning of it, I would say. If the health department comes along or somebody comes along and says there's a code change, then that's not the fault of the architects or the engineers or consultants. It's the fault of the system. And so there'd be an example where a contingency would be dipped into, you know, requested to go into to change that. And those are unforeseen that nobody foresees today. And we never foreseen a lot of different things. We would have built this five years ago, we wouldn't have the code change that was on the insulations. We wouldn't have the code change on the pump sizes. We wouldn't have all the code changes. And, you know, so the present pool alone is between $100 and $150,000 with code changes to meet next year's standards on the existing pool. David?
With all the numbers we've seen, there's nothing there for the demolitions, there?
Yes, there is.
It's included in the demo area.
Yeah, sorry.
In the construction costs.
Yeah. And again, on that one too, you know, we discussed the consultant that did the cost analysis on demoing it. If we're able to demo it cheaper, then we do. You know, I mean, if we see some areas where we can save costs by doing some of the demo ourselves prior to it going out for tender, then there's some savings there, so. Elsie?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I've got another question. What if, you know, the budget or the contract or the tenders come way off budget and you have to review the plan? So that could delay the project again. And I heard that legally, we cannot operate, you cannot operate the pool next summer because?
Well, yeah, if we want to operate the pool next summer, we have to spend that between $100 and $150,000 in bringing it up to standard. Up to the new code. They sent all the pools in the province of Alberta a letter saying, you're done. Either bring it up to code or close it down.
We had to, they did give three years notice on it and had till November of 2019.
Till of 2019?
To upgrade to the new code. The reason why we didn't upgrade anything is because we're anticipating being in the middle of construction.
And then, sorry, and then also the other thing too is that the operating costs on the pool have been going up substantially the last few years because of some of the problems with the pool itself. So to operate it into next year is, right at the moment, doesn't look very promising.
Cool?
Any other questions? Josh?
Did we check any of the costs that were involved in any of the communities recently that built pools?
Um, yes, there have been. And in fact, the builder of one of the pools that, you know, just finished one, are the ones that have been telling us that the prices could come down. The only way we're going to know, in my opinion, of what is going to be the real true cost is to go out for tender. You know, we go and kick the tires all you want, but when you say this is the final one and say, I'm willing to buy, but what's your best number? It's, could be potentially different than what we've been seeing so far.
Yeah, I mean, the, the cost estimator, Altus Group, did the estimate are highly, highly experienced. And we have worked with them on some very recent projects, very close to here. So their costs and their unit rates that they're using should be, should be accurate.
Was Blairmore one of those?
No.
No?
One a little closer.
We're just, I'm just curious, the reason I ask is we talked to Blairmore. The pool seems to be a lot like what we want.
So it's only a five lane, not six? But, okay.
Cool. Don't, I would, I would disagree with you on some of the reasons for needing a six lane. The Tin Man made it clear that it didn't matter to them how many lanes were there. They'd still run the Tin Man with whatever pool.
That's what we were told, but anyway, go ahead.
Okay, well, they have said that. But, and the other is summer games. We can host this other number of summer games with the pool of any size. They'll adjust it. I know they will do that. As far as swim means, I guess that would be the one that we would be, would maybe be a problem. But even it being only five lane, I mean, talking to their counselors, that pool came in at one and a half million on the bill. So I'm just curious how we're at 3.974 without a hot tub.
But they didn't, they didn't build a new building?
They did not build a new building. And that is my next question. They're $200,000 into a building, completely renovated.
Pardon me, sorry?
$200,000 into a completely renovated new building, right? A lot like ours.
Yeah, again, I haven't looked at their pool. I, I did talk to some of their counselors.
Yeah.
And some of the numbers that they're using are not, one counselor tells you one thing and another-
Well, that's fair enough, and that's why I ask if we talk to them and if we can go down for it. Or I'm just wondering why.
But again, I think that the best bet is for us to go out to tender. And then we're going to be as close to being as honest as the figures are right. Whether the estimators are wrong or right, or whether, so that, that is the best way, is to go out for tender. Come on in.
And I did talk to Blairmore and ask for their numbers and they spent 1.78 on their building, on their pool and renovating their, putting a new roof on their building. They didn't do, the only renovations they did to their building are doors. That's the only thing. So 1.78 is what they spent and I have that in writing. And for the summer games, they have changed regulations with Swim Alberta. And you have to have the certain depth, we don't have the depth that they need. We have, there's a lot of things that they won't let us do, do a competitive swim anymore. So those have changed in the summer games.
But even the lanes, like without water, like how does it?
Well, you're trying to move as many people through as possible and swim is one of the mostly attended swim and soccer or the highest attended events in summer games.
Yeah.
Richard?
When's the last time you had summer games?
2003.
Yeah, 2003. They're not, they're not cheap, they're expensive.
How many, how many times have we had them over the last forty years?
Uh, probably three, five, or three, three, four.
Three times? Okay, so a lot of money.
We use, we use the average, one, one a year, one every ten years.
Every ten years.
Is what they, they did. They tried to. But there is, there is a cost to it and Josh is right. Do we need to ever have a summer games in our community? And then, but again-
It's an added cost to the town to host it?
You betcha.
Okay.
And using, the biggest cost to have the summer games is upgrading your facilities. You know, that's probably the biggest cost to any community that has hosted the summer games is they don't have facilities. Now, we can pick on some that are close to other facilities where they can share. But we can't share it with Oketok, we can't share it with Nathan because Nathan's does not qualify for summer games. Period. Their indoor pool, that's not, so we couldn't borrow their pool. Clairso, we cannot borrow, use their pools. So Pichibut, we cannot use their pool. So the closest pool that we go to would be Brooks or down to, like Vauxhall, we can't use their pool. So we'd have to go to Luckbridge, Medicine Hat, Brooks. Those are ones that are close to, I guess you'd go to Oketok's maybe. I'll make a deal with Oketok's, High River. But anyway, so that's irrelevant to a degree. I think the major thing that this council has to make a decision on tonight, I think personally, is to either to put the project on hold, go out for tender and see what the tender prices come in. And I think we'd be fools without hold. I think if we don't go out for tenders and see what the tender prices are and then go from there when it happens.
One thing worth noting is the question asked about Blairmore because I do know that if you, you've been down there and talked to the contractor that built Blairmore is the one that's aggressively going after this project here. We did have an opportunity to talk to him at the AUMA convention. He's waiting for this to come out, so. And of course, on the other side of it, holding his cards fairly close because he has to be in a competitive tender. He can't tell us, I will build it for X amount of dollars because we'll hold him to that like gospel. We can't, we can't do that right now, so.
So, but once we go out for tender, then that gives you the opportunity to see the honest, true prices that somebody's out there willing to, to build it at. And until then, all we're doing is doing the giant circle, running around chasing each other's feathers. Elsie?
Sorry, I've got another question. I don't know if it's the right place to ask the question.
Don't ask it then.
What is the, or is there any involved, county involvements, county involvement in this project?
Yeah, they're, they've been involved with us right from the very beginning, so. They have.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, we partner on recreation, so our discussions are, we, the last discussion we had with, with the county was that we were going to move forward to get the actual costs for the pool. And the only way we can do that is taking to the tendering state. Once it's passed there and we have a true cost that we could move forward with, then the conversation between the two councils will continue on how that partnership for recreation will, will work for the pool.
Well, we've had a great working relationship with the county.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Go on once, go on twice. Okay, well, we will call this part of the meeting closed and you're welcome to stay for the rest. Or if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to. It is farther on the agenda, the question of whether to proceed or not. So council will have that opportunity to discuss that later.
Can we unshot some more wine then?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming. And like I said, everybody's welcome to stay.
If you make it home on time, this will still be on YouTube, so. You can see the discussion. My, my kids think I'm as famous as the weatherman.
Great, thank you everybody for coming. That clears everyone in a hurry.
Even you guys don't want to stay?
If I didn't have to have a meeting all day tomorrow, I would.
Move it up by eight.
We might be on the eight.
Come to another meeting, we have a bunch more morning at nine, so you're all the way in.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, Alice.
Okay, we'll move on to correspondence, number 5.1, Old Man Watershed Council. Is there any question on, on that at all?
They send the request every year. Paul attended as a member for a couple of years and made recommendation. And we, we aren't affected by the watershed, so we haven't contributed for the last two years.
We've got two inputs to the watershed waters from our sewage lagoon, which is once a year roughly. And the others done by the pioneer.
Okay, so just for information, or like we couldn't do all the correspondence together unless somebody wishes to move something separately. Okay, moving on, farm safety, smart education program. We get requests for this every year.
I don't think we've ever given it to it, have we? We haven't?
No.
Well, I've not ever given it.
It was brought up for discussion with the contribution.
So is it, might be incorrect, it's $100 they want?
It's up to the, up to the community.
Oh, okay.
Love?
My thoughts on this, maybe it's something that we do consider. I mean, we have money set aside for candy for the floats this year and we never used it. Maybe we could, even if it's just $100, like we, I know we were thinking more, it's more of a county thing, but we do have kids from the farm that go to school in bulk. And maybe, unless I'm misunderstanding it, maybe, to me, it sounds maybe it's something that we should consider.
You could do it through the one-time grants to organizations, like there is funds available in there that would easily do $100 donation.
Well, I think that $100, the way it's worth, it's indecentive. You're saying if all these communities contributed $100, it'd be fine. But if only these communities contribute, you're going to need a lot more from each one.
But I think they'd be quite pleased to get anything, would be my thought.
Yes. Now, the other side of the coin is, I believe UFA contributes to this.
They used to, haven't they?
They used to certainly. And they're still strong, well, not as strong as they used to be in this community, but they are there. So indirectly, this community is contributing.
Right.
Just as hard.
The original conversation that was had by council came down to farm kids as town kids. That's what it came down to.
Right. I don't know, I guess I'm a little bit inclined to be the same as Lyle in that safety is safety is safety and the more the kids get at an earlier age, better chance. Because we all know, yes, we don't have any farms in town. Well, I don't think we do. But farm accidents are quite high for deaths and injuries in province. My thought would be to make a donation just as a gesture of support.
$100?
Is there a motion?
Sure. Okay, so Lauren moves.
To a one-time grant?
Yes.
A one-time grant?
Yeah.
$100?
$100?
I'm sure that if a counselor wishes to support this and send some money on-
On behalf of themselves, they can.
I'm sure they can, could do, but. Anyway, so Lauren has made this motion. Any question on Lauren's motion?
The one-time grant, though, how many times have we heard that? Somebody's come and said, well, this will be a one-time thing.
Oh, no, they'll, they'll come, they'll come again next year.
That's where you can take it from, from this year.
We have, we have to make one.
That way it's not a recurring thing. You can approve it every year if you would like to, if it's a one-time. Or discontinue it anytime you would like as well.
So we don't have to approve it next year? Doesn't become a line of-
We may not even approve it this year.
You might, yeah, depending on your vote, you may not.
Okay, so any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call a question. Okay, so that's carried. One post. Okay, South Grove. Any questions on South Grove admission report?
Yes, are we part of any watershed group? Like Little Bow, not Little Bow, but Bow Valley or Bow Richard Watershed?
The only watershed that I know of is, that's still very active is Old Man.
Okay, uh, does the Little Bow, I know it, you know, it starts over near the High River area. Do they have a-
They, they used to, but I, I, for years, I don't think they've been active. But they used to at one time, because I remember Dave Mitchell used to sit on, I think it was called the Highwood.
Because the source more than, yeah.
Yeah.
When we dealt with the drainage out of Frank Lake, they, they were very active in there because of the drainage out of Frank Lake went into Little Bow, which was where we were drawing our water from. So we were quite involved with the Alberta environment and the watershed.
I guess my question, it really probably shouldn't be to us, it should be to South Grove is, could the Little Bow be included with our Old Man and Saint Mary if they're doing a water security forum?
I, I think this water security forum is more than just the Old Man watershed philosophy, but I-
Well, I think they want Southern Alberta to, to look at it. But I thought since they're targeting those two, you know, wouldn't they include someone who's caught in the middle? Like we're not Bow and we're not Old Man, kind of in the middle.
I, I'm not sure, I guess you'd have to direct your question to somebody.
And I should have questioned that, but I didn't, just thought of it actually.
There you have a spot at the table that could ask that question.
You know, I, I know that they're, you know, really pushing the RITA thing, you know, the Regional Economic Development Associations.
Right.
They're really pushing that because it's talk about disappearing.
Might be gone, yeah.
And then they threw in this water security forum, which is on November the 7th.
Now, it's in, like, I don't know what thoughts are, whether we should, since we don't belong to that watershed, does it matter? Or is it just because it's all part of Southern Alberta?
No, I think this is a separate symposium that they're putting on.
To try and-
To, to, to talk about the water conservation efforts.
And where it's going.
Where the water's going, you know, so.
Well, I would suggest that we send someone to the forum on the, I think, November 7th. Maybe just to get information if nothing else and maybe after that. Of course, then we have the memorandum of understanding too to deal with if we so choose. Don't you sit on South Grove? I do, but they're asking someone be appointed to, for this forum. I would think you would be the logical choice then, if you already sit on South Grove.
And it could be something where you could gauge our, the value in, in us participating by, by attending.
Then the next thing, I can't go on November 7th. Something on, so it can't be me, so I guess we'd be looking at our alternates. So that's why I didn't want to speak too strongly about sending someone because I know I can't go.
All right, on you. If, if, if you don't want to go, Michelle. There are other people that could go if, like, Paul might be interested in going because he was interested in sitting on that, that other group to do with water conservation.
Yeah.
So it, it has something similar, something again, you know, he's all, Paul and George Lee are both on the Water Commission.
And I'm free on the 7th.
See, that's going to be my question because I'm free on the 7th, but I don't feel like I would be the best expert in that wheelhouse to go as gathering information.
Get to the eye.
Yeah. Sweet and just honestly.
Well, and I wouldn't either, but I, I have no, I can't even go, so that solves that problem.
If you want me to go, I will.
Personally, I would feel that it would be much better covered in-
I think you're the best person.
As an alternative for Lauren on the South Grove, you can, you don't really need a motion. You can just go as an alternative to.
Okay, so we'll, we'll send somebody to-
And then, yeah, if there's value in it, we can continue, we can proceed with the memorandum.
Yeah, and it sounds like they're only going to meet once a year, so it's not, that part might not be too overwhelming.
But that might be, Lauren's comment or question might be a good one because, I mean, our river, the Little Bow, does flow into the Old Man watershed area, flows into it. But it, it starts- the Old Man watershed area, flows into it, but it, it starts, they, they always talk about where it starts, not where it ends. And so you might have a bit of a discussion too about where it starts, or where it ends, or how we fit. Because sometimes we, with South Grove, I feel like we're the third child or the hidden child that's underneath the basement stairs.
And start and finish are fine, but what's in the middle?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I feel the same about South Grove, that's why I didn't really want to, for us to not be there, because I thought that maybe if we keep showing up, then remember we're here?
Yeah, well, we do have a representative that's.
Who does a real good job, yes, I will say.
Anyway, okay, so we don't need a motion on this. Moving on to Community Foundation and Southern Alberta this report, so everybody should have.
We just did the first page, because it's in a magazine form, you all have a copy, then there's a copy available.
Yeah, so if you didn't get one in the mail or through the paper, there is a copy of it, it's got lots, it's a great, it's, it's a, we have quite a lot of information in that booklet, you know. Most of it, of course, has to do with the South, which is understandable, but it is, it's been, it's really good, it's unbelievable, some of the statistics and.
Gives you a good idea of what else is going on in the area.
It's kind of shocking some of the statistics too, though, so I, I think it's a good read, if everybody hasn't had a chance to read it, should read it. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, we'll move on to.
Water security forum.
That was the one that.
Laura was chatting.
Laura was chatting. Okay, any questions on any of those seven? Or five, I guess it is, sorry. If not, somebody wish to file the correspondence? Okay, so Laura moves that we file the correspondence, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, call the question. That's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business. Swim and Pool Capital Project Replacement. Hopefully, everybody kind of caught a glimpse of the numbers that, you know, Kim had sent out too, and that a portion of that is already been, we've already budgeted and paid for. Personally, I think that the only way we're gonna know the true costs and not say what so-and-so built, or so-and-so built, or is we take the information that we've got, send it out for tender, and get a true actual cost of what we're asking for. Not what somebody else could have or did it, could have or should have. And again, I'm not trying to knock what Blairmore did or didn't do, or what Pitchaboot did or didn't do, or, you know, Coalale, whatever. This is the only way we're gonna know true costs. And so once it comes in, then we can see what's our next steps.
I'll put the motion on the table, the council directs administration to move forward with the tendering process for the Swim and Pool Capital Replacement Project.
Well, Sam.
Okay, yes, good motion. So any, any discussion, anybody want to discuss any of this, because I know it's, it's a big, it's a big project for us, we haven't had one item like this other than the sewage lagoon that has been, you know, as large of an item for a one-time thing. I, I think the sewage lagoon is probably our last big one, that we did ourselves personally, I mean, we partnered with the the water treatment plant with, with your separate group, yet we were partners in that, and that was a big one too, but. So it is a, it is a big step, but on the other hand, I think that if we take a look at the numbers that have been out there for, it's something that's been questioned and needed for our community. Theoretically, and I'm saying theoretically, we should see a reduction in operating costs substantially by replacing the pool. And give us hopefully another thirty, forty years of recreation for our community. At lowest cost as possible. But, Paul?
Have we factored in the need, or the non-need for operating costs for next year?
Well, we did make a request to the.
Yeah, so as part of that for the budget, the 2020 budget, there's still going to be operation costs for that, for that facility office.
There should be some savings too?
Yes, we've asked for a reduction in the water costs from the Water Commission, hopefully they'll, they'll approve that. And we won't see any savings on the staff end of things, because we're going to use that for remediation for the things that we can do ourselves, demolition, that, that sort of thing. Chemical, those sort of things, but of course, some of those have been reallocated inside of the recreation budget for, I know this is very preliminary, but there's gonna be a proposal for fixing some of the wall diamonds, that's. The line items have been ground within the recreation budget, but that's, the committee had some conversation about that. And both volumes do have provided their input to that, that's yet to come to council.
Yeah, that'll come soon.
That's preliminary budget document that we've had so far.
Anything else, Michelle?
Sorry, how many thousands of gallons is the pool losing currently a day?
We lose ten thousand gallons a day.
So just in terms of financial implications?
Fourteen thousand or bigger. Approximately.
How long does it take, I guess we get to sit within the tenders close, but if, say, we chose to go forward tonight, how soon would they, would the tender go out, do you think?
So, so the plan right now is if we move forward with Lyle's motion, it gets approved, you give administration direction to start the tendering process, that means that while working with Gillan and HDR, because that's part of their contract, is to provide the tender documents, so they will draw everything up, they bring it back, we look at it, and then they put it out. And their timeline on it is they would like to, Gillan hinted at it, try and get them out this year, so hopefully the first of November, so that people can work on it before and hopefully have something to council by the end of, or the middle of December. Is, is what they're working on, they do know they only have one meeting in December, so if they miss that deadline, then it'll be into January before council will have an opportunity, but that's.
So they're hoping to try and get in that, sorry.
What's that?
We can have.
You, you can have a special meeting if, if something comes up, but that's the, that's the whole. We had, again, since we started this process, that group, as you saw in my report, we met twelve times trying to get everything to this point, and the whole, the whole push was to get this so that we could tender it at the end of the year, if council wants to move forward and we could get to that budget. As we discussed at the AUMA, our costs are as close to that four point five as I think we're going to get without cutting scope of the project. So now, like Tom says, it's either put it out to tender to see what you can get it built for, or that's, that's it for projects.
Now, again, I mean, Gillan and Josh and a couple comments were made that, you know, we, we could change the, the design of the pool, we don't believe that we can change the design of the building anymore. Again, too, Gillan never went into it, neither did HDR, but there is a, a rule of thumb that Alberta Health has for the amount of square footage you need for the building, for the amount of square footage of water surface, so they're related. So if we cut back on the water surface area, we could cut back there, on the building size and save a few dollars. So Josh is right, we could save some bucks, we do, and one comment from Richard, how often do we have the Summer Games, how often do we have this? The only question I have is that our ratepayers have been accustomed to the size of the pool that we have at present, all of a sudden have it three feet or ten feet narrower. I'm not sure what they would think, whether that was a step forward or a step back by the ratepayers, but that's just a personal feeling.
That was one of the reasons for the shrap, and you guys all took part in that when, when they started this process, they sat down with all the user groups individually, they had four meetings, and they took in everybody's wants and wishes and needs, and then the committee was appointed to tell HDR, okay, yeah, this is a want, but here's where it is priority wise, or, and that's why we're things, where we said, you know, we could look at changing the scope of the pool, we got talking about how many dollars that would save, so if we, we tried to get pool designers to tell us if we eliminated a lane of pool, exactly how many dollars can we, can we save, and they would say, well, approximately this or this, and it, it was kind of a changing number. And at the end of the day, they were kind of trying to talk us out of removing the, the scope of the size of the pool. Some days, they tried to talk us into reducing the lane numbers, but that was only when we were very adamant about what the budget was, and then they came back in the same sentence and said, you can't redig a pool once it's, once it's done, once, once you've got that base in there, that's your pool for the next fifty years, so don't make that decision lightly, if you've got user groups that are saying, we need six lanes to hold the Summer Games, and that is the goal of the community, to hold the Summer Games again, and we have motions on our minutes that we are supposed to pursue the, we are supposed to pursue the Summer Games for 2020. We, it just wasn't available because we didn't have a pool, we couldn't do that, so it has been talked about by this council for hosting the Summer Games. So that was where it came as one of those important factors, so that's where the water slides and hot tub became something that they can be eliminated from the tender to save, from the scope to save that money, but can also be added if we do have a significant savings.
And also too, you know, there, some of us have heard that there is a grant that has been applied for, that we won't know about now until the new year. And so if we did get that grant in the new year, and that's why Gillan said that if you tender the water slides and the hot tub in the tender package, but it's an extra.
Option.
Or an option, that's a better one than an option, that if we do have this other money comes through, we can go back and put those back in the pitcher, and we've already got a firm cost on them, we don't have to go and say, oh, well, you know, so-and-so put one up for this amount, and so-and-so put up one for this amount, we already got a quote. So I think that's the advantage of tendering, the way Gillan and HDR are recommending, and then we can go from there.
Indeed, without the contingencies, who write at the four point six?
It'd be hard. Yeah, and, and again, we've argued with them, both these two, well, maybe not we, some of us have argued more than others, that the tighter they drew the pitchers, the better they do their job on the pitchers, the less potential that you need to dip into the contingency. And that's why I threw in about the code change, because we honestly didn't know until less than a month ago about this cover.
Our eleventh, our eleventh meeting, we were told that we needed a cover.
We needed a cover, and it has nothing to do with the Health Department, it has to do with the.
Energy.
The Energy Department. And so, we didn't know that, and, you know, so all of a sudden that goes back to another wrinkle that you don't know until you put it out for tender, really. And then they come back and say, you know.
Well, we're better off to have some contingency that we know we can pull back on than not even address it at all.
But again, we will get another kick at the costs, once we know what the costs are firm, and again, you know, Josh is right, you know, other communities have built cheaper, and we all have looked around, and there's, they're all around us, I mean, you know, most of them turn to the South, but they're all around us type thing.
But we all run into that every day, anytime we do something, we hear about somebody that did it cheaper, or faster, or.
Well, when was Blairmore's pool done?
It finished two years, three years, three years.
Well, then it's not even a feasible comparison, is it?
But the one that's probably the closest to us is the one at Pitchaboot.
Which Gillan's.
Which Gillan's in Volburn, and he's got the true numbers, true, true numbers. And again, I sit on a committee that has a councillor that is from Pitchaboot, and his numbers are different than what their accounting and Gillan's given us, they're, they're different numbers.
But it just seems to me that three, four years ago isn't even a feasible comparison at this point.
So it's tough.
Things change so much that.
So, so that's why the closest we're gonna, going to get is when we put it out for tender.
And the best, the best answer for that question, if people are asking you those sort of things, is Blairmore can't build a pool in bulk. We're getting prices for building a pool in bulk.
And right off the top, there's six percent, like that, two percent escalator, it's not factored in.
So.
A minimum of.
So we're, we're hoping, and we're hoping that the contractor that did do Blairmore's is willing to bid, and he believes that his numbers will be better than what he gave the estimators.
Okay.
Because he had to give a number to the estimators that he knew that his competition, and they saw, again.
It's all about strategy, right?
There is, there is, but yet, when we put it out for tender, then it is, they're held to it, you know, so. Lyle's got a motion on the floor, any more question or comments? And I want, I want to make sure we debate this enough that we feel comfortable with making that.
Well, I think this isn't the scary one, it's.
Well, if, between now and the, if we move forward with the tendering process, between now and then, then it'd be, I'll break back funding options.
Yeah, so that'll, that'll give us a better feeling too of.
I think once we get the exact funding numbers, they'll take all the rumors, all the guessing out of the community.
I think, I think you're right, I think, I think you're hundred percent right, is that, it's, it's been, it's really, really hard, and, and don't think that none of us, the rest of us haven't been throwing the numbers around, because all of us have heard about the Blairmore's, the Foxhalls, the Pitchaboots, the, you know, Champions, the, it could go all the way around us.
The mayor that drives around and takes pictures of them all?
Yeah, and I take pictures of them all too.
Why can't we do this?
So if, if, you know, so Josh is right.
You gotta ask, right?
But anyway, so any more question on, hearing none, I will call the questions. Laura's motion. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the, to Laura's project. I'm sorry, to the Capital Street project.
Can I find out where you get grants for these kinds of things? I guess my question is, can I be part of this discussion?
Yes.
You can, because it equally, it equally affects everyone in the area.
Yes, it does.
Yes, you're, you're applying a rate of six hundred and eighty-two ninety-nine per meter for the entire block.
Okay.
So, and this, as you can see by the, by the lot map, this is the frontage for this project, the total anticipated cost that we got from SEMA were just over a million dollars, we are anticipating, again, that has a ten percent contingency in it, all of those things, we are hoping the final costs have gone down, and you have seen this over the last three local improvements that we've done, as the project comes in, we're, you know, I don't want to throw out a number again, because it becomes gospel, but we have seen significant savings, what we do put into tender, yeah, in this time of year as opposed to doing it in this frame when everybody's busy, so. What we need to do from this point forward is if council's in favor, you're back, you're, what you're doing is you're approving this plan, so if everything goes forward, we take this plan, we send it to the affected property owners, the two of them are sitting at the table here, so, then engage, and we don't make them do the formal petition, as the MGA says, we just basically gather the numbers and bring it back to council, and, you know, if it's over half of it, then they're opposed to it, then it gives you more of a discussion, if it, if it comes back more than, and you, you've seen it before, you saw a local improvement get turned down because the, it didn't actually hit the two-thirds, but there was a majority of owners that did, were in favor of it, so.
So if the land isn't developed, there's still a cost?
Yes, the, the local improvement.
And it does change, a house should pop up there?
No, this, this is, it's based on frontage and not assessment, so even if, and, not that you would have a place to live, but even if you took out a demolition permit and removed your home and all the assets from the lot, this local improvement would stay at the same rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so any questions, thoughts?
Very similar to the previous ones.
Yeah, we, and we follow the local improvement, the local improvement policy that you have, so when it's initiated from the town, it's seventy, twenty-five seventy-five, and we amended the policy after the first local improvement to, because we're not borrowing the local improvement portion, we do not charge interest on it, so it's just a straight-up twenty-five-year repayment of those funds.
Now, that, that doesn't mean that the ratepayers that live along this can walk in with the full amount.
And pay it outright.
And pay it outright, then they don't have to put it over the twenty-five. Outright, then they don't have to put it over the twenty-five years.
There's no advantage to it if, if you were to sell your property. Uh, when there's interest on it, there is definitely an advantage, but without the, we've seen less paid upfront, because the advantage goes away if you sell your house halfway through, and that's why our local improvement is very fair. If you sell your house halfway through a local improvement, the new owners continue to pay for that street work that was done in front of the house.
I know how many times that street's been dug up, and it makes me pretty nervous.
Yeah, uh, this, and again, this, you guys know that this was brought up through students' evaluation of our, of our total infrastructure and water and sewer, and drainage in that area came up as a significantly uh, high rating that needed to. It was a toss-up between there and Four Street itself, so.
Okay, I'll make the motion to proceed.
Yes, Paul moves.
To approve the local improvement.
To approve the local improvement.
The administration to distribute the plan to the affected property owners.
Yes.
Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. And that is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to patrol car video. I'll let Kim speak to this one too.
The report's very straightforward, the body cam and the car camera and audio are hooked together, and they've been failing fairly recently, and of course, we use them for file evidence, so. Uh, Greg has brought it up as a concern, as you know, through the budget talks, uh, the car is now at the end of its lease, and we're using the free, the free months on it, so, uh, we have no intentions of replacing the car right away. So this system would have been part of the car upgrade, so you'd like to independently do this, uh, to keep the camera up and running.
If for some reason we decided.
To get a new car, we would, we would take this system, yeah.
It would be transferred, okay.
Yeah, and Greg did a substantial amount of research into it, and as you can see, by buying from WatchGuard directly and having it installed, um, he saved the administration costs on it, so. He's asking for, uh, the nine thousand dollars to do the project, uh, four out of his operation budget, and five thousand from his operating reserves, which the operating reserves are four equivalent repair maintenance, so.
So taking the four thousand out of his operating, operation budget, does that make a crunch for him?
He, it's, uh, through, through his budget, he said at the end of the year, and
So he feels fairly safe.
He feels confident that he won't be over budget by the end of the year, removing the four thousand, easy.
I'll make that motion that we go with that one.
Okay, Georgely. Any questions on Georgely's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to six for victim services.
Regional response.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Over view service.
The R R E A.
Sorry, I apologize.
Uh, and they're making a similar request to what they made last June for, uh, hanging the purple, uh, ribbons and the capping. Leaflet, I guess they would call it.
Yeah, it's just laminated information cards, because there's various types of other abuse, and ones that a lot of people don't realize, between financial, emotional, spiritual, medication, like, yeah, it's pretty scary. So anyhow, uh, we had a really great response when we went and hosted them down Main Street last year. Um, a lot of really, really great feedback, and being Domestic Balance Month, wondering if we did the same. Anything that we put out, like where Leclan and I went and did all of them last year, kept track of where we put them and how many, and we went, I think it was the day after it ended, uh, last year and got them all up, so there was no littering or garbage or anything like that associated with it. So if possible, we'd like to do that again this year.
So that's your motion?
Please.
Okay, so now Michelle moves that we allow them to put them up. A question on Michelle's motion.
Exactly, they're already indicated when they're going to take them down, I think that's, if there's any left, that's good, yeah, good.
Love.
I was just gonna say, I heard a positive response, and I thought it was a great idea.
And as an aside for a shameless plug, on November twenty-second, the luncheon win that we're heading as well, anyone like to come? It's a great opportunity, so, yeah, we've got a couple speakers coming in.
Okay, anything else? Hearing that, a call question? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, municipal planning commissioner member-at-large.
Oh, no, sorry, the water, water commission. Do you move it down more?
Oh, I'm sorry, I put Michelle's name beside that one.
Now she, now she has to do the next one too.
I guess so, she's on a roll, I almost wanted to go home.
Trying to get out of here quicker.
Okay, Twin Valley Water Commission's budget, this proposal.
Very straightforward, the commission has supplied their budget, they've already have, uh, their meeting, and their bylaws, uh, statement. They send it out all to the members for thirty days for comment, and if no comments are received, then they approve their budget, so. Uh, you've all had a chance to review it, you have two counselors that sit on the commission to ask any questions about it. But, uh, the only thing that I've known from this is I actually sent a formal request to Ray, uh, to lower our rate, seven thousand cubes for, uh, two thousand and twenty for the core, not op-keeping operations. So I've already addressed that with a formal letter to the water commission, and I believe it's been sent out to the board for consideration.
I have a question, and I'm probably just not reading this properly, but so at the bottom, you've got the A C F A old and A C F A new. So why is there such a difference?
The Alberta Capital Finance, uh, old is for the regional water treatment plant upgrade, and the commission took over all of the assets, including all of the debt. So then they, then with that, when they finished up the product, they had to take out another capital finance new bill to, to finish up.
Finish it, okay.
Water treatment, okay.
At this point in time, the county gets to talk about this tomorrow, town's already got one question on it. Carmengay hasn't made any comment or anything on it, nor Champion. So we're basically gonna wait till the end of the month, and then we'll go through. If, if that is everybody's wish, so she might have other thoughts.
Yeah, so based on, based on this, I just put recommendation to, uh, unless you have anything specific you'd like me to send to the commission, uh, that you can receive it for information, I'll just reply, but councils, uh, receive it.
Yeah, you've already made your request.
My comment, uh, yeah. The water commission is its own entity, so they write a position above the process, so it's, uh, based in their bylaws that they do allow for each member to have the information.
For my information, so the town of Vulcan, the, like, the water there goes to Champion, Carmengay. When it says Vulcan County, does that also mean Kirkley?
Yeah, Kirkley comes under.
And somebody else?
There is no other co-op other Kirkley, right?
So can we have that one that we, uh, addressed that they could have?
That comes off of the town of Vulcan distribution system, that's why we had to give approval for it.
But they pay for it?
We build county for it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the water commission builds us, and we build county.
That, that one's a weird one, so.
That's just kind of a.
McKay's and theirs, because it goes through our infrastructure, it's metered into the town, and then metered at the vault. So anybody in between theoretically is on, on, built the town, okay. So unfortunately, it was one of those weird ones, but, um, the advantage of it being weird was is that it, um, saved a substantial amount of money when the facility was originally built, because they were gonna have to put in their own water line, and it created some major cost allocations to the water commission.
You saved approximately five hundred thousand dollars.
Just for that area, that one?
So that, that's why it, it's kind of weird, so I mean, the commission theoretically sells us the water, but they own a portion of the water line, matter of fact, a portion of that water line was owned by us, because we put it in, you know, so. It's a really convoluted one, but yet, on the other hand, it was the win-win for everybody, it was so much cheaper, but it created other wrinkles. And this is really the easiest way, is what they did. And I think that, you know, water commission saw it that way, and that's the reason why they approved it, so I think that, again, if we have no forms on what their budget is, then we just accept that, and.
We have two people keeping eagle eyes on it, so.
Yeah, no.
Wants a, wants a chair.
So if there's no other comments, and the administration has no comments to add, they got the request for lowering the amount of water that we have. Or been using.
Received that for information?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, Paul moves for information, so again, stroke it off for Michelle's name, do it, Paul. As a woman, she say, make the motion, and I would have to stroke it out. Anyway.
Well, I can back up.
I can stroke you, but Michelle will back against her.
No, I gotta stroke your name, oh, no, we're staying with it. Okay, any question on Paul's motion, hearing that, I'll call a question. Okay, it's carried unanimously, thank you, now we'll move on. M P C. I should just stick with the one piece of paper and stop looking at two?
Nancy was the only one that got the new changes to our administrative reports to work. We're actually gonna try to change your recommended motions into a blue, so they're highlighted, so Nancy, so Nancy's the only report that it worked on this, this month, so. But it's very straightforward, Dell Wilson was the only one applied, uh, John Seaman's term is at the end, and, uh, he is, that he is no longer interested in, but it wasn't that he's no longer interested, he's been twenty years.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
That's what he said, so.
I would move that, since Dell's been in council.
Okay, so Laura moves. Any question on this motion? Hearing that, I'll, I'll call a question. And that's carried. Okay, organizational meeting, this is just a heads up, so Kim is.
More, more the question of whether you'd like to, uh, you can hold it on its own night, or, uh, traditionally, yeah, because we've, you know, they're fairly straightforward, they only take about an hour, even if you do committee appointments. Uh, we can either do it before or after the next council meeting. Before doesn't give you a whole bunch of time, if you do want to change a whole bunch of committees, uh, after, just allow. If we set it for eight o'clock, we just have to make sure we get the meeting done by then, and having said that, uh, the next meeting's going to have fairly light agendas, so it can easily be done after as well, so. Depends on whether you want to be here through your supper hour or a little bit later.
Probably at six, it's hard for you, or is it?
So after, do you better?
Yes, please.
Eight, eight o'clock.
So, so the motion?
Sure.
Okay, so Laura moves that our organization meeting be held after the council meeting, eight P M on October, what's the date, twenty eighth? Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I will call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, C O evaluation.
The only reason I put this on here is I talked to the mayor and reminded him that there's only four meetings left over the year, so. And I do know that the three sixty evaluation that you guys do does take quite a bit of a process, because you do send out those surveys to members of large staff and councils, so it does take some time to put it together, so. I thought I would remind the mayor earlier than I did last year.
So the only major change that we talked about last year was changing, uh, so you don't have to go with, uh, you know, like the one, two, three, four, five, you can go with three point five, three point seven, five, um, you know, type thing. So that'll be the only change, unless you can think of other changes that we might need to make, but we'll try and get them out as soon as possible, so it gives everybody an opportunity to get them back, so that we can promote together. So.
So the recommended motion is just to direct the mayor to conduct a three sixty performance evaluation, uh, and, and with the assistance of Karen, and that the results be reported back to town council and regular meeting prior to year end.
Well, I like the idea of being able to break it down, because I, I felt like it, it's too big a gap, and just one to five.
Yeah, just so that you do all know, that when I do go through with Tom, I do a, a year-to-year comparison every year with those numbers, so being able to break down those numbers even more will be more helpful to me, because I use those to concentrate on areas. Urban.
Okay, so is that agreeable, so you wish to make this motion? Any question on Laura's motion, hearing that, I'll call a question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to committee reports. So there are five there submitted. Bapa, which is the one that I go to. Any questions on, they only meet twice a year, so we don't usually get much until the end of the, till the next meeting. Okay, moving on to the Canadian Badlands. Any question on that one? Okay, another mayor's reviews. That's the one that I got a present for, because I visited too long after.
Oh, expensive present.
Well, it was only ten bucks.
A gift.
Was it?
A gift from the city.
He paid it right away, it was ten bucks.
Oh, wow.
So I walked in, and she says, I got this gift on the front of my window, and I'd like to pay it, she says, you're the first person that said that's a gift. Okay, any questions on, we'll move on to the golf course. Mr. Taylor is great, because he always brings it in as quick as possible.
Golf course has this incredible secretary, he actually sent me, or sent out the minutes the night of the meeting, and we were up in Edmonton, and I said, doc, are you okay, Karen?
Well, that's good, wish I was as efficient as he is and you are. Any questions on the golf course one?
So you're quite happy with that high school tournament?
Yes, I believe, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, I saw that there was quite a few vehicles there, I was wondering what was going on. There's a bunch of kids there.
I think I heard from one of, I don't know if it's the teacher or someone connected with it, that's one of the highest churns they've ever had for, in a, a high school tournament.
That's good to hear.
It is super, it's really great to see.
And the snow kind of put a dent on a few things there.
Yeah, well, better than last year. Golf course in terms of finances?
Oh, that part, yes.
Okay, any questions, this, okay, we'll move on to the Queen Valley Regional Water Mission Meeting. Any questions on any of those? Hearing that, so if you wish to move those committee reports? For me? Any question on Laura's this motion? Hearing that, I will call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to verbal ones, Mr. Taylor. And it's Karen Manes. Okay, moving on to verbal ones. Mr. Taylor.
Okay, I went to the A U A and you were all there, so I'm not gonna belabor that. On the Water Commission, I say we're gonna wait for the other communities to wade in on if they have any questions. And then come the end of the month, we'll decide one way or the other. Which changes, then we have to change it. C A O, I believe you were all there, Communications one. And F R E S K, this is what I get is on Kim's desk. Big one on the F R E S K was the nine eleven levy. Right now it's forty-four cents per cell phone. And Wheatland County is, has a motion to the R M A to raise it to ninety-seven cents. Well, the problem is there's a whole lot of equipment that has to be purchased to meet the new generation nine eleven. So you should be able to take your cell phone and hold your cell phone. Well, here's where I am. I don't know where it is, but here's a picture of it. And it'll go straight to the dispatch center and and a lot of other upgrades. And my understanding that for each seat, each desk at the dispatch. And we've only got four at Ocatokes. Eighty thousand dollars a pop for equipment, so it's not cheap. So the money has to come from somewhere. And the biggest funding is from cell phones. That's coming down the pipe.
So who collects the, how do they collect for each cell phone? In fact, charged monthly to your bill?
Yeah, if you're going to bill, it'll be a, oh, I charge.
I could see if it's pouring forty-five cents.
Problems collect seven, distributes it.
Okay.
And I believe it distributed on per capita based on the.
I believe so. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think they do, they collect it and distribute it on the tablets. And I think a couple meetings ago, Paul made comments about how much the landline is compared to the cell. And it's really lagging behind.
Well, landlines right now, year by year, are dropping between three and seven percent. So that's revenue out the window. Part of this is to make up for that, but the other side of the coin, cellphone usage is still going up. And we have to be in compliance by twenty twenty-three. So there's a lot of money to come up with. And this is the whole province, not just the province.
Okay, any questions, Paul?
No.
Any questions for Paul? George B.
Um, yeah, I was also at the A U A and the C A O information. Um, I had a meeting with F C S S. They're supposed to start putting out like a, kind of like a resume, not as per say resume, for people that want to join the board because it's too vague. Like, everybody's just coming in going, oh, I'll sit on that. So they're trying to get the right people on the board. So we've made a kind of like a resume thing for them to apply for. And that's all. So we'll see how that works. And Wendy Theaters, or Theodore, Wendy Theodore, yeah, it's Wendy. She resigned. She's moving to Calgary, so with her new husband. So they'll be looking for somebody to replace her during the year. And what else did I have? Oh, I had an A R B meeting in Carmengate last Thursday. And I also was at the Water Commission where we discussed the budget and stuff like that. So that's all I had.
Any questions for George B? Mr. Magnuson.
I too was at the A U M A workshop and the C A O communications, A U M A convention, C A O communications workshop. Uh, we were supposed to have a.
G P C?
M P C meeting today, thank you. Uh, but that was canceled, so I have no other meetings to report.
Any questions for Laura? Ms. Thomas.
Uh, I also was at A U M A and the C A O communication. I had a tourism meeting last Thursday morning. We went on a tour for the proposed locations for the Bird of Prey. Yeah, I'm not sure which one I like best as of yet. Um, there's donation box for the Bird of Prey and there's an, I believe there's an email address set up. I would have brought it, but it wasn't, uh, I didn't find it in my paperwork, so I must have jotted that down on a different piece of paperwork. Um, the budget has had some minor changes, including the six thousand that we had discussed a couple meetings ago for merchandise.
Okay, any questions for Laura?
There was a pretty cool picture that Miss John's put up with the Bird of Prey over Vulcan.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm gonna add that to that post on the stores page once I find the email address. We started the hashtag Bird of Prey. I put that on the stores webpage this morning, or Facebook page. So once I get that website, then I'll add that to it to start hopefully getting some donations going.
Okay, sounds good.
It was kind of cool because he's got the shadow and everything put in there. It looks pretty neat.
It does, yeah.
Any questions for Laura?
Have you considered GoFundMe?
Um, there's, we can't do a GoFundMe. Um, I don't know exactly the reasons. I don't quite understand. But it has to be different kind of fundraising because of the kind of project.
Okay.
Because that was looked at.
Great, thank you. Ms. Thomas.
I'm a Ms. Roddy. I was at A U M A as well, and just previous to that, like what, three hours before I hit up, um, also had an elder abuse meeting. And from that meeting, the biggest thing that came out of it was that funding got approved for that sort of grant for us to be able to finalize that Gabrielle Kirk is the Claire's Home coordinator, case coordinator. And we decided she is available to actually part-time take over Vulcan and area. So she's actually from down by Nobleford, I believe, between Nobleford and Carmengate. Um, so she's rolling from the area, really great bench. She started with Claire's Home with their program implementation as well. So she's kind of has quite a bit of experience. She also sits on the provincial elder abuse board. So really great opportunity to have with that, which is phenomenal. Then went to the A U M As. I was also at the C A O communication session. And then right after on the fourth, in First South's role in Cohearse, they had the Economic Disaster Resilience and Recovery Workshop. It was incredibly valuable. The amount of reading that came out of it was pretty substantial. It was a really interesting to, after going through the flood and me virtually being from here and seeing that side of it and something in my stat the timing affected, but then also knowing and living in Vulcan and seeing how Vulcan responded was really kind of a neat position to be in. Um, I am slightly biased, but I think that Vulcan did an absolutely incredible job during the flood, and I'm really proud of the community for um, our response to it. So anyhow, that was really neat. And then the day after that, on the fifth, um, in Coldale for Victim Services, there was a half-day workshop on directing for, it's called Gold Over He Minds, and actually Greg was down there as well. Um, headline from Addison and her yearly calendar to support V S U. But, um, a lot of it going on, okay, if you're a community member, if you're a board member, if you're anyone that sees somebody that's in distress or, you know, that might be not in a great place emotionally or mentally, how do you handle that when you're not an expert in that area? Or you can't say, hey, I can't tell you what to do, but all I can say is, you know, how do I help? So that was, and I do think too, being demographics in our community was pretty important. And then on the eighth, we had our regular chamber meeting, which is going through the budget and kind of grins like that, gears goals. We were supposed to have Tracy Acorn, who is on the provincial Chamber of Commerce. I had her slated to come out and do a half-day, um, the organization of boards and informations for chambers, which was, would have been really awesome. However, importantly, that was the day of the snowstorm, and she's from Edmonton. So that didn't happen. So it just ended up being a regular budget meeting going through and that kind of thing. And then, so hopefully that'll be rescheduled, hoping that we can do it by webinar, and then it's not a matter of reporting logistics and that kind of thing before the new year. And then earlier today, had our our other elder abuse meeting kind of going on. And it's timed really well with our organizational meeting and say, okay, like, this is, now we have our permanent council. This is our permanent executive. And, you know, who wants to maintain a seat? Is there anyone else that wants to step away? Where's the value? And what's the really important stakeholders? So that's what they're going through and really focusing on right now. Um, and that's, they're pretty much up with it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Ms. Michelle.
Um, this is, I'll make a little bit of repetition, but I was at the A U M A and C A O. But I did want to bring up, and you're probably getting sick and tired of hearing this, but the one session I went to at the A U M A that I thought was very, very worthwhile was rebuilding your downtown. And I know if we had X number of dollars, we could do a lot, but again, tourism is our third largest industry in Alberta. And they are saying that, you know, we need to keep that in mind. And I think that's something that we need to keep in even just the back of our mind and working with maybe the Chamber of Commerce, just to always see what we could, what little things we could do. Maybe we can't do big things right now. So that's my soapbox thing. Um, I had a Vulcan County Health and Wellness meeting. The fall event, which is the one that Tom and Jonah graciously given us tickets for, is on November thirtieth. And it sounds like it's coming along quite well. Pictures for the contest for the Heritage Wall, I think, will be judged by Gil Ward, but also by the Art Society and the Historical Society. So I think all three groups will be working together for that. Their, um, Peggy Huffday and Gil Ward had attended a foundations forum in, I believe, Calgary. And so foundations get together and discuss things, and they found it very worthwhile and how all foundations are struggling and what they do to overcome any of the adversity. I think that was about it.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, I guess on to me. I too attended the A U A conference, and I can't remember all the ones I went to, but there was some pretty decent ones, that's for sure. And then I had a joint use meeting, and the major discussions were on the prayer or the C R C. They've got new mats that they lay down there for, so any event that's going to use chairs, they're going to try to use these mats, which is gonna add to the time it takes to put them out and to the time it takes to put it away. They also are still looking for a custodian for the C R C, at least they were last week when I was at the joint use. So if you know anybody that's looking for a job in the evenings and weekends, they're looking for somebody. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up to the C A O communication slash education thing. It wasn't exactly what I thought it was gonna be, but I still think that she brought a lot of information to to the table for us to ponder. We should have the answers to all the questions that were asked, you know, in the next week. So everybody look at a copy of that so that you have a answer to the questions, every question that was asked. Some of them did have the person's name that asked the question, and then remove that. So it would be just more of a generic answer to a generic question type thing. Um, Paul did categor, not this Paul, but Paul Ryan did categorize them, and so that, you know, they're, some of them are into the categories. Uh, went to Mayor's Reeves. Um, can't remember. There wasn't a ton of information because we had no MPs there, which is understandable because they're all, you know, campaigning. Uh, there was a bit of a discussion on, um, on some of the red tape that's trying to be removed in some of the departments and trying to make them more efficient. And a little bit of discussion on the information that came from the A U M A conference, you know, from the Premier's address. Uh, and then I had a Vapa meeting, which is where the minutes from the last meeting came up. And there's not a ton going on in the community. I think there's gonna be two wells throughout the whole county of Vulcan. That's why it. The other scary one for the county of Vulcan is that there's another oil company that has gone bankrupt. So, um, they're gonna lose some more assessment. So it's gonna be another, you know, kick to the county on the assessments with this other company. Now, they might have had that knowledge prior to us hearing about it there, but it came up. And then the last other, our last pool meeting was to discuss the final draft of the, of the plans and and to bring it forward to today's session and discuss, you know, how they were gonna deliver their information. And then I had a C A O executive on last Friday. And there's another one where I do chair it. And so we ask for any negatives, like who's opposed? Because when everybody says they're in favor of it, you can't understand who's all saying that they're in favor. So we all only ask for opposed. So when you chair three or four different groups, you can see there's always a dilemma, which question to ask, when, how, and why. So I appreciate you guys putting up with me. Anyway, that's about it for me. Yeah, any questions for any of the ones that I just brought up?
Quite like that C A O. It gave me a lot of information.
I thought she was pretty decent. She was very reasonable. She has quite a bit of knowledge in municipal affairs too, and.
But just even talking with the people around, because I gained a lot of information. I had no idea.
Yeah, and I think once we know the site too, um, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how the process goes to the next level. Hopefully we'll know about which one is the shortlist by the engineers at the C A O meeting on the twenty fifth in Olin Wheat Country, Wheat Country, Wheat Land.
Wheatland.
Can I? Can I do this next, Paul?
So the engineers give a shortlist, or they gave the shortlist, and then they pick a site.
They pick a site.
And then how is the final site picked by the members?
Yes, yeah.
Now, how do they stop that you don't, okay, so say it was gonna be the town of Vulcan, which of course it isn't. So could we go out and rally people to vote for us?
Well, yes and no. I think that's probably one process. But then what they're, they're going to do too is look at, um, once it's released, there'll be a time factor and see how much problem they have. As an example, Bysaker. Bysaker knew, council knew about it a year ago, that there was a potential site for a, an old waste energy facility being refired up or retooled and turned into burned biomedical. But they didn't bring it to the public until two weeks ago. Now the council in Bysaker is being raked over the coals, and they have a meeting tonight with petition to stop it from happening. So if, as an example, there's two locations and one gets no, um, there's two locations, one gets picked, but it has lots of opposition and the other one has no opposition, then if they're the same. Or it might come down to dollars and cents too, which one is the most economical to, um. And there is another one that is being proposed that, you know, if it comes down to two sites that are almost identical, is, you know, one site might be interested in putting up some cash.
So this is nowhere near finished.
It is nowhere. That's why by the end of the year, we propose to have a site. But it's not, it's, it's not easy because, you know, um, unless one really shines, you know, you know, clicks every box and, you know. But unfortunately, the one with Bysaker, you know, not to pick on poor Bysaker, but they had it there. It was there for years and years and years, and it burnt. and, you know, used, you know, and created energy. And then it was closed for the last 10 years. But now Biscayker, it's right within the corporate limits of the eligible Biscayker and they got a petition out and they got more than a third of the names on that list than my baby. And the same questions, I think, that Biscayker residents have are the ones that were generated from around the table theoretically. You know, why in my backyard? Why, you know, what's it gonna do to my kids if they're gonna come up with only one arm? Or, you know, why does they grow up? Or all these questions that, you know, is, are out there that. Anyway, so hopefully by the end of that year, we do have a site. So anything else for me? If not, somebody wish to move the council reports. Paul moved. Any question on Paul's motion? And now I will call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the actualist.
Mr.? Very straightforward. We removed the local procurement plans that you saw this evening. I wanna thank Laura for doing an update on the nine in the line. That obviously is gonna stay there for a long time until there's a proposal put together of how they're gonna fund it, where it's gonna go. So appreciate you giving the update on that. They are still working on it. The streetlights, just a quick update, based on late in the year, we haven't received polls yet. So most likely, we're not gonna see any poll installation this year as it keeps snowing and we keep getting frost. But I can never say never, but it's not looking positive that we're gonna get any out, but they have been ordered and are on their way. Our computer upgrades will be happening the Friday before next council meeting on the 25th. So if intermittently that weekend, of course, they're gonna be replacing our servers, things like that. So there'll be times where the emails that may drop off, but they will, they'll try to make sure that the servers are, they come in Friday after we're done at work and they work through straight through until Monday when we get back. So.
I was just gonna say, was there a?
Lauren already knows who's coming.
No, 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 that had nothing to do with. Was there, when the power outage on Tuesday, was there problems with their?
Yes, yeah, it's, when the power went out, we have backup, battery backup for our servers that won't last so long, but because it kept going on, it kept going off, kept going off, kept going off, we eventually drained our batteries down. So, but then before it actually killed our CPU, we actually turned the servers off. Didn't do, shut everything off, never did. Actually, Tom was down here and when the power finally came back on, let them also, they can fire us back up. Rather than having our servers that are right at the very end of their life and we're hammering them off and on, we decided to try to preserve them for the next few weeks. Other than that, basically straightforward, just the stuff from the last meeting was all completed. Unless there's any questions from council.
Okay, now we will move on to the next one.
My CAO report, very straightforward. Again, met again with the airport gentleman that's interested in a lot of the airport. That's actually going to probably trigger enough that we can actually have an airport meeting for those that are excited about having an airport meeting. Does have some questions about the lease and, and it should promote a pretty good discussion with that. So we met with iCompass, they made us aware of some of the changes they made for some other Canadian customers that were able to use. It was good to catch up with her. They have, there are always kind of changing things and because of our implementation and how it went, how unique it was, I think, I believe I told you the last one, they should actually showcased our, our community down in Florida at their, at their conference for all of iCompass for their users. And the reason why they used it is, and they had a lot of people, the feedback, they thought we were fake town. They thought it was a tourism, you know, and she said, no, this is, and just showing like the little icons that we use, some of the stuff that we implemented. And they actually showed the videos of our meeting. And one of the things that they, they pointed out afterwards, they, she highlights that I wave at the camera at the end of every meeting, so I know when to shut it off. And not very many people catch that, but she was passing that kind of information on. And it was really nice to get that feedback that they actually use us as a, as a showcase for, for how the system is used now. So, so must be using it well. We obviously reviewed the 2020 street program. Parent payment options for some tax rear agreements. The CSS documents for the province. Of course, those that are, that don't know, FCSS is run through the town. So they, they have their own director and the board is responsible for the director. But they have to have a host municipality for that. So any of their financial statements, all of that need to be signed off by myself. So I have to go on the provincial site and sign off. Carol does submit it, but then I have to sign off on it, so. The Highway 23 project, obviously, is completed. And we are, everything went well with that. They were delayed a day, they were short two blocks called it, so, but they did get the point. It all looks, looks pretty good from the inspection that I did this week. We met with, or I met with North and Company to execute the human decline transfer. So now we're gonna get started on a development agreement. Going on now. And short of the meetings, the, with iCompass, the AUMA convention, the SEWA communication and the Tango pool meeting, I didn't have any other meetings. So unless there's any other questions, that's it for me.
Any questions for Kim? Okay, move on to the NUT officer. Any questions on Nancy's? Okay, move on to Public Works, just for chips. Questions on Stu's? And now move on to the Community Services Manager's report. Did you forget to tell Bonnie that they got the extra $6,000?
No, actually, at the last meeting, we were informed that they spent it already.
Because on this one, she's still waiting for it.
Yeah. They, she duplicates her report between the Red Committee of Council.
And tourism, we get the same one too.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on Bonnie's? Any CPOs? Kim and I were talking about, there was a comment made by Greg that he was doing a bit of, looking around at other communities and some communities are lowering the speed limits in their community to 40 kilometers an hour. Nanton is one as an example. If you go through Nanton now, it's 40 kilometers an hour. And then unless it's posted, so like the playgrounds are still at 30, but everywhere else is, is 40.
Ocatoks has been that way for quite a while.
Ocatoks is 40 except for the highways. Yeah, and you know, Carmengate is another one that's 40 kilometers unless, you know, it's posted. And River Dave lowered their speed limits in their alleys to 20 kilometers an hour. And because they're having, and the theory of it is too, is that if you post a 40, you're hoping people will at least do, you know, stay under the 50, you know. Whereas if it's 50, they figure they can, somebody has left out a myth out in the world that you can run 10 kilometers over the speed limit. That's a myth, you know, I mean.
Especially when you get a ticket.
Yeah, if you get a ticket, they can give you for one kilometer over if they really wanted to. But, but anyway.
A lady got caught in that, but she was also eating her noodles with chocolate sticks while she was driving.
So one, one of the things Greg had mentioned with that is that he's looking at that for other communities and bringing it back to council. And so when Greg and I talked about it, because that's a, that would be a huge change in our community, there'd be some public consultation with them. One of the things that we have is our, our radar signs that actually track traffic and speed. So he just ran, you'll, you'll start to notice them now that we're not placing them in front of the pool and those sort of things. We're placing them randomly around the community. And even if they're not showing the speed, they're collecting that data. So he'll be able to actually give you some good data on, say, Third Street South, it doesn't have any stop signs running east to west. What's the average speed of traffic there? And if it's being one of our faster roads for traffic, because it doesn't have any stop signs on it, the average speed of traffic is already 40 kilometers an hour. Justifies, you know, lowering into that because that's what people are safely driving at. Or it opens up the discussion for that. So, and it also helps you guys as council when you have taxpayers. Because at the end of the day, our taxpayers care about our community, but they care about the 60 feet in front of their house most of all. So you, you may get received, you know, Lyle I know has received complaints about speed in front of people's houses adjacent to his. And this gives us a way to, to have that conversation. And to be completely honest, that's, that's what got us interested in it, is start tracking it. Because, you know, for a lot of our streets, where council over the years put in a whole bunch of stop signs, things like that, the reason was to slow down traffic. It might not be needed if everybody's already doing 30 kilometers an hour down that road. And it's something that you can blanketly do community-wide and then something that you look as an excuse. What they do is they post signs that unless otherwise posted, it's 30 kilometers an hour or 40 kilometers an hour. And then you can keep your truck routes at, at whatever postings that you would like.
It's just a heads up that.
Yeah, they might come back for the conversation. It's worth a discussion.
Other communities are doing something similar?
They say, and of course, if you, if you read a bunch of the information about it, they say, you know, the, for, it's specific to school zones, but in playground zones, but the, the injuries by dropping that 10 kilometers an hour substantially lower the livestock threatening injuries that can happen for pedestrians, it's those sort of things. And that's, that's how a lot of communities depend on. So, yeah, we're having a conversation, we'll come back.
Is, would that affect, like if the town went to say 40 kilometers an hour, would that affect Elizabeth Street then as well?
No, we cannot post speed on Elizabeth Street because it's a provincial highway.
And that's the same problem with Ocatoks.
Yeah, and same with, same with, the number twos is still 50 through there. But all the other streets are at 40. And again, it was just an assumption because I know they were having, on 26th, people were cutting across, instead of going down the highway, they would cut across 26th and go from one that goes up to the bar, or to the 529, go west and then go east. They'd cut across there and people were doing 70, 80 kilometers an hour. They put in two stop signs and still.
There's a daycare along there.
There's a daycare, up in front of daycare, there's people going 70, 80 kilometers an hour. And so they just lowered it to 40 and hoping that people would, and that's an assumption, that's why they lowered it, but they, they had lots of problems. They put up signs saying, you know, this is a residential street, please do not have speed, none of that. Some people just don't seem to catch that.
So just a heads up, if somebody does talk to you about it on the street, we are collecting data so that we can bring it to council if it does come up as an issue.
Any other comments, questions by Greg's? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the Parchees. Yes. The way does it have this spaceship set?
It was added this morning.
It was this morning.
Oh, is that what that means? Because the first time I looked, this was not here.
I see we're up to 20 members. How many of those are juniors?
I'm not 100% sure. Usually they mark that, but I honestly, Paul, I can't answer that, but I can't get that answer for you.
Just curious, because they're not allowing juniors to do some things.
Yeah, you guys should be having a fire committee meeting fairly soon for the budget as well.
Okay, any questions on Peter's? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to file the administration or pick Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to Germit. Paul, Michelle, thank you very much. Okay, Michelle moves us to Germit. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Somebody can go home. Thank you very much, everybody.
Well, the other day down First Street South, first of all, someone went through yield signs in front of me. You had someone on first sign in front of you. I actually thought I made it better over to Center Street. It's getting a little dangerous and they weren't going so. I don't know, hey? No, damn, that was, I think I was talking wrong.